Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's start today?
Me. Betty's start. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the April 23 meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, and Commissioner Blair has our dog from the kennel today. It's not a big dog, so I can look for a walk. Oh, look, he's a nice little dog. This is where we're going. Come here, puppies. He is, this week's featured pet is a male. No, you're not going out to see them. This is a male terrier mix. He was a stray, he is a stray found on Case Road in Elaria. He's in cage number 29, and is eligible for adoption on Saturday, April 25th, 3:00 PM. Stop by our dog pound, see what's available, or check us on the website. Our thought for the day, don't let what you can't do interfere with what you can do. As soon as Betty takes a seat. Okay, Teresa.
Under presentations at 10 o'clock, we'll have a presentation on make your layoff payoff under resolutions number one, job and family services bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Propriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I would like to have an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting. I have a number of labor relations issues with regard to our contracts to discuss with the board. I've met with representatives of the United Auto Workers and the Teamsters and the Steel Workers, and I want to have some discussion with you on that. I do not have, at this point, any hiring actions, which we go out to personnel, but the first issue isn't allowable discussion under the Sunshine Law, so at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, can we have an executive session? Thank you.
Okay.
Approve and waive the reading in the same for the County Commissioners Meeting Minutes for April 14th and 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Point Mark Weldon is Lorraine County's April Inspector for the year 2009, total annual appropriation is $3,400, with mileage reimbursement of $0.05 per mile.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla. Aye.
Conform the boundaries of the city of Oberlin from Pittsfield Township, consisting of 27.9260 acres filed by Attorney Eric Severs. This petition and map legal description received on April 8th in accordance with Ohio Reuse Code 503.07. Oberlin City Council passed various ordinances which accepted the various annexation of certain properties. City of Oberlin ordinance number R0902-CMS adopted March 16th. Petition the board to conform. City of Oberlin O908ACCMS adopted February 9th, accepted the 27.9260 acres from Pittsfield to City of Oberlin April 9th. I forward a letter to the county engineer and auditor for review. April 16th, the auditor certified the filing. April 20th, the county engineer reviewed the petition and confirmed the extended but current boundaries of Oberlin Township due to an annexation of property from Pittsfield. There is one discrepancy in the map of the northerly line of parcel 71 of the city's parcel owner ID table. The parcel is located just north of US 20 and east of State Route 58. The map shows a distance of 258.79 feet, but the records and description for the city shows a distance of 253.79 feet. And today, I did receive the corrected map and description.
Okay.
And Attorney Seaver is here, if he's got anything.
Morning.
Good morning, President Kokoski, and members of the board. I'm here as the Oberlin Law Director, and of course, I've been here before on these, and we had another annexation that we completed earlier this year of about 28 acres. For your information, the property is basically at the northeast corner of State Route 58 and US Route 20, directly north across Route 20 from the vocational school, right behind the gas station, if anybody's familiar with that intersection. Although, one time, I think the owner was going to develop the property, or was going to sell it for development, I think that stalled a little bit at this point in time due to the economy, but we're hopeful at some point that that will be developed commercially. As the clerk indicated, there was a discrepancy in the legal description in the map prepared by the engineer, I should say, the city's engineer. I believe that was probably a typo, a three that typed as an eight, and it has been corrected, and I have submitted corrected maps to the clerk. So I would ask that you approve this conformity of boundaries, if you would, please.
Is there anyone from the engineer's office that'd like to comment?
We did submit the corrected map to the county engineer's office day before yesterday.
Okay. I guess we're ready to vote. We don't have to, nobody from the township here? No. Okay. So moved.
Second.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proven enter renewal agreement with course effective May 1st, 2009 through April 30th, 2010, an authorized payment amount of $883,222.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I'd like to say what a great deal this is for Lorraine County, I believe.
Well, it is a great savings for Lorraine County. We've looked at this off and on, to see if going it alone would be cost-effective, and for the umbrella coverages that we have, it's pretty close to impossible for us to achieve these cost savings, and I would say that I think things with COSA have improved over the last year or two. We had some issues with them early on with claim management, but I think that they've come around a lot, so I would encourage us to continue to participate at this point with the consortium of counties enrolled in COSA. I think at last count, they had 67 counties in the COSA program.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye.
Authorized County Administrative Transfer of Rural Property Interest, County Port Authority is outlining in Ohio Reuse Code 307.10.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Did you want to comment on this transfer property?
Well, some of this is the property that we were fortunate enough to obtain at auction to increase our parking in downtown Elaria, which we're still working on. There was a couple parcels that we had to take, it was a combined purchase. We're transferring the property to the Port Authority because I have more flexibility in how the property is either A disposed of, or B can be utilized towards the public good and economic development. It's a good collaboration, and the county doesn't have as many powers and authorities with this type of commercial property that the Port Authority has, and you're aware that we're working right now on the old flea market DIY building on the other side of Elaria, because the ports can certainly involve themselves more fully, and this will give us the opportunity to either utilize that property for revenue income, and/or sell it to pay the county back at some future date.
Is that property included also in here?
Right now, current intentions would be Depot Street parking lots and the downtown building that Main Street, Elaria, is occupying. The county is retaining the large parking lot, which was the parcel that we were after the first time, on Broad Street that contains over 50 parking spots. Currently, there's a very active pursuer of the Depot Street parking lots to purchase them, so once we make this transfer, I believe that those parcels will be moved pretty quickly, and then the county will be reimbursed at their purchase price for the property.
Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approved enter and apply 10, Help Me Grow Subsidy Agreement with Ohio Department of Ohio Commissioners Administrative Agent for and on behalf of Chum Family First, effective July 1st, 2009, for June 30th, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I've got a question, Jim. Didn't we have concerns about how the Help Me Grow's can go forward after the new biennial budget from the state? Number 16.
We do, Commissioner.
The subsidy, have they approved a subsidy for us?
We have some approval on that. Things are still unresolved. We're going to lose a great deal of TANF money, but it looks like we'll make up some of that in GRF dollars. We still have the Part C federal dollars. We're looking at the budget right now with regard to what we can do and can't do with staffing. There's certainly going to be reductions, and there's going to be a reallocation of resources that's going to be necessary. We have an RFP on the street right now for our service coordinators, and we're looking at trying to lower the overall cost because we, bless you, because we have increasing need and decreasing revenue, and the revenue comes from the federal government, but vis-a-vis the state. So the future's uncertain here. I wish I could give you a better explanation, but there are going to be some reductions across the board with regard to services that we can provide.
We don't have that as of yet, though.
I don't have an affirmative positive answer, except to tell you that we are going to definitely be reducing. Remember, TANF dollars represented about 70% of our funding. I'm not sure the state's going to have enough GRF dollars around to be able to supplement that TANF. The discouraging part is that the TANF dollars are still going to be available, but they're being put into another program over in the educational system. I believe that TAF, excuse me, Strickland is trying to fund his P-16 initiative and get the universal preschool launched by using some of the TANF dollars that we routinely use for the zero to three population. Now, P-16 is really important, and preschool, universal preschool is absolutely an important issue, but we need to service some of these families before they even get ready for preschool, and we're losing those dollars. This is a really, really great program to access the homes and the families very, very early on to try to provide aid and stability in the family environment before problems occur, and we need to figure out how to keep these programs moving. I will be bringing you more on this as we progress, and just to give my little kudo, Melissa's been doing a great job for us over there. A lot of problems that we've had the last few years have really come around to be straightened out, and our progress has been significant with meeting the state standards that most counties and we were too, not achieving. So when I have more, I'll bring it back to you. I might even ask you to, you know, make some calls and write some letters on behalf of keeping funding in this program.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Just my concern is next year's budget, which means a subsidy agreement.
Absolutely.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Aye.
Under Job and Family, approve and enter renewal agreement with Maximus Concord Township, Ohio, in the amount of $3,500 to update the space report to be paid from the professional services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Shark Clerk to advertise request for proposals for prepaid gas cards published in the Chronicle on April 27th, and May 4th, open at 2:00 PM on May 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Transit, approve and enter agreement with Arcanetics, Elaria, to perform architectural services for Lorraine County Transit Maintenance Facility in the amount of $21,655 for professional services, plus reimbursement expenses not to exceed $2,000, for a total of $23,655 to be paid from federal grant funds received by LCT.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
No general fund money for this? It's all grant?
Well, yeah, I see that. I want to be careful how I answer this, because a lot of our money does have to be matched. I think that we're probably going to use some of the facilities that we have now, Ron, as match on that.
Right. It's an 80/20 federal match.
Right.
The hell's going to yell at you? You better come to the microphone.
The money that we'll use is FTA, it's an 80/20 match, but we have local contributions that will fill in the match for this particular architectural service.
We have around, right now, I think we have the ability to access about $160,000?
$135,000, $150,000, someplace in there.
And then we can roll, if we need to, we can roll into the third year and pick up another $80,000?
As of September.
As of September. So we're looking at about $200,000 to $220,000 ballpark for build-out for the county to have a transit maintenance facility. One of the things we never had before was that, and we should have had it years ago, we've always paid rent. Even though we had a company doing our maintenance and our dispatching of the buses, we had to provide their money to rent a facility, and we never took the opportunity to get federal dollars to build our own facility and then pay ourselves the rent, and that's what a lot of folks do. So with the grant money, we're going to build out a portion of the old DIY flea market. We haven't named the building yet. I always hate when we have to say the old this, and we're going to do something with that soon. They'll be in the front part, up where the Garden Center was. That's our current plan is now to do build-out, put bays up there. About, I think about 10,000 square feet will be built out there, and that'll get that into operation in the building. So we're pretty pleased that we got this money from the FTA to move forward, and obviously it brings outside money into Lorraine County, and that's what we keep trying to do.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under solid waste, approve and enter agreement with Arcanetics, Elaria, to perform architectural services for Lorraine County Solid Waste Collection Center, in the total amount not to exceed $102,994 to be paid from the solid waste account. Any additional costs for specialized services of subconsultants must be authorized by the owner in writing prior to these services being performed. Only the actual cost of these services will be paid by the owner.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I guess I have a question, because you sat in for me for the solid waste policy committee meeting, the last one that they had, and when I attended the one on Tuesday, our revenues are down, and if we get to, I think there's a magic number of like 25%, then we have to do other things with the plan. Are we getting close to that, and does the solid waste policy committee know about this collection center at this point?
To my knowledge, this policy committee is not aware of this at this point, because we hadn't officially taken action. As far as the 25% in the budget adjustment, the mandate with the policy plan, I've asked Mr. Billman to keep us informed and let us know where we are. I've not heard anything, so at this point, I'm assuming, but I will check this afternoon, I'm assuming that we're not at that magic threshold yet.
I meant with Dan yesterday. Revenues are down. There's a lot of, I want to, for lack of another term, call it razzle-dazzle going on with Allied right now, with regard to positioning and trying to leverage us into different types of agreement. I don't know how much of it is saber rattling, smoke and mirrors, or reality. I've had a hard time keeping track of the various weekly changes to how they want to reduce, change, modify fee structures. It's kind of mind-boggling, and Commissioner, you and I talked about it, and I think we were both like, this is the new plan of the week. But revenues are down, they are moving some of the materials that were dumped into our landfill over to the Youngstown area right now. I don't know if that's because fuel prices have remained steady at a lower cost than they were experiencing, but I think that's a temporary issue. If fuel goes up, I think they're going to find that it's vastly more expensive to run it over to Youngstown. But I also, just this morning, was reviewing something I started reading last night with regard to what's going on in some of the other counties with limiting, bring dumped material into their counties, and it's something we have to address also. So there's a lot of issues out there, but I will say that revenues have been down a bit. They probably will continue to decline until we shake out exactly what's going to happen with the fee structure and where Allied's going to be positioned at. You may know more than I do about that, but I'm a bit confused, and I don't like being that way when it comes to these issues. I don't think we've hit the target number yet, but the possibility of doing so, it may happen. But this program here is something that we've talked about for about five years. In fact, we were discussing it when both you and Ted were running for office the first time, and, you know, the location didn't work, and the building didn't work, and now we have the opportunity to make it work. I will tell you that we're paying a lot to have these days where, you know, hazardous waste day, entire day, and it's a massive amount of money, it's a massive amount of mobilization that needs to be done. Once we have a facility that's open on a regular basis, a couple things I think will happen. A, I think collections will increase dramatically, because most people don't want to wait to the day, or they can't make it that day, or they don't want to wait in a long line that day. Sometimes the wait's been a few hours. I think, so you'll have more tonnage coming in, you'll have more responsible disposal of hazardous substances and things that can be recycled. And the third thing is we'll be able to meet our targets more fully and provide a better service to this community with regard to what we can take and not take. Right now, if you have this stuff, you have to store it in your garage for weeks and months, and a lot of people are not doing so. We still have a lot of improper disposal of these things, and I think a lot of that will stop by having a collection point where it's convenient for them to come over and drop it off on a regular basis.
I agree. It beats sitting, having our people sitting out at festivals handing out toys, and we can actually be doing the job of recycling and collecting those things, so I look forward to it.
Well, I think, part of our revenue reductions in the district, I think, is because people are recycling more, too. I mean, that was part of the goal of the policy committee, is to increase recycling. Plus, you know, times are tough, people aren't buying as much, so they're not throwing as much away, and then you have Allied on top of that taking our waste to a different landfill, so.
Would you like me to talk a little bit about what we're, we don't have the architectural renderings yet, and that'll come, but what the board has been discussing with regard to the center? It'll be a drive-through center. It'll be at the back of the DIY building. There's loading docks back there to bring in tractor-trailers, to be able to park them and load them on a regular basis. There's also some big bay doors there. We envision a drive-through facility where you actually drive your car in. You'll be escorted through various parts of the building, and your car will be unloaded, or your truck, or whatever you're bringing in will be palletized and moved to various spots in the building that are specifically designed to handle that type of material. We're beginning with about 40,000 square feet. There's enough room for another 40,000 build-out. If the program looks like it's going to take off, we felt that the first 40,000 was sufficient to have the pilot program put into place to see what actual square footage would be needed. We also envision having staff there on a regular basis, so people can drive up at regular hours, they can call, they can know when they can come over. It'll be consistent, and the materials will not be stored on-site very long. We anticipate palletizing and then loading the trucks and having people come and take these trailers in and out of there on a regular basis. Right now, a lot of the collection points are spotty, and we should be able to provide even further collection for various waste that we don't do right now, we rely on the community to do, such as oil from vehicles. Right now, AutoZone does a great job and a couple other folks, but you have to bring it down, and we may be able to collect those things from people, too. This is going to be kind of a state-of-the-art facility. It's not a very complicated facility, but you have to watch out for your fire codes and your storage codes and so forth. Great thing about this building, it's already sprinkled, it's already warehouse environment, it's already opened.
And it was free.
And it was free. So we're able to keep the rentals per square foot cost down, and it's ideally situated and ideally designed for us to be able to not have to completely renovate and totally build a building to meet our needs. So there'll be more coming back once we have some drawings and renderings from the architec, but I'm sure people are going to want to know what we're doing, and that's just the beginning of the concept for them.
I'm impressed. Only five years to get to a collection center. Government at work.
It's only because it was free. We've never done it if it wasn't.
You're right.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Under workforce development, approve and enter contract with Carroll Manufacturing Sales, Avon, preventive training with incumbent worker funds in total amount of $56,524.28 with employer contribution, incumbent worker training funds in amount of $28,274.86.
Authorized County Administrative Executive, behalf of four prosecutors, prove as to want.
Let you speak first, Dan.
Good morning, Commissioners, members of the board. We have with us today Carroll Manufacturing and Sales. They're coming to us for Project 10 funding to do a wide variety of training. They're looking at performing supervisory and managerial training, workplace ethics and communication, new manager training and customer service, shop math, and three different computer trainings under Word, Excel, and Outlook for their staff. We have with us Chris Carroll, President of Carroll Manufacturing, to talk a little bit about what they're doing.
Good morning. Man, it sounds like we don't know what we're doing with all that training. Thank you, Don. My name's Chris Carroll. I'm the President of CMS. We're also known as Carroll Manufacturing and Sales, and we supply packaging to the food processing industry. So our customers would be names that you would recognize, such as Tyson, Conagra, Hormel, and we're looking to invest in our team of associates. We feel strongly in training and keeping them up to speed with what they need to be successful in today's competitive environment.
Chris, you want to talk a little bit about your growth in Lorraine County? You're one of our spotlight companies with Pulse, and you moved here and took a chance on our community, and I think things have been going fairly well for Carroll Manufacturing?
Yes, we've been in business, Jim, for 10 years now. We're a family-owned and operated business, and we have had a lot of growth, significant growth. Fortunately, people in this economy are still eating, so that's a good thing. What they eat remains to be seen. Our business, we moved four times in six years, and our most recent location prior to moving to Avon was in Westlake. We were landlocked, out of space, and we tried for several months to locate a facility that was clean and safe for food packaging, and believe it or not, there are not a lot of facilities in the size that we needed. We currently are under one roof and 70,000 square feet. A lot of the facilities that we looked at were automotive-related and very heavy in dirt and oil, and so really, we got a chance to meet with the mayor of Avon. Never met Jim Smith before, but he convinced us to buy land and build a facility, and it's been a great experience. We've been very happy with our neighbors, we've been happy with the community, and we've decided to make an investment and be a sponsor for the Lake Erie Crushers, and we're also considering a donation to the new YMCA. So, yeah, it's been a great experience, and we're happy to be here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Chris, you're going to do a nice job out there.
Thank you. While we're tying into that, before you finish up, Don, I asked last week for some
numbers on what the incumbent worker training program has done.
Yes.
And currently, there's been over $1 million invested, 56% of that private sector in training for their employees, and 45% almost, state and federal dollars.
That's correct.
It's the federal down to the state again, right, Jim, or, Don, on the?
Yeah, it's a combination.
The incumbent worker training's always been difficult. This program, though, stands out, not only in the state of Ohio, but nationally for what we've been able to accomplish, and I really thank you for what you've been able to do.
Thank you.
And guys like Chris who are actually investing in our community and their employees, which is really important. Chris, you do a great job out there and I'll see you at a crushers game or two, I'm sure.
Sounds great.
You know, Commissioner, you may want to like repeat that number, a million dollars worth of training. I will, I will, because before this, we didn't have a program and we fought for years to have this program and then we had to take on the entrenched establishment in Washington to be able to get there. Without that match on the wage, which we set the national trend for, we wouldn't have that million dollars churning and out there for these employers. And I anticipate that next year's going to be another dynamic year with training dollars. Right now, companies, you know, they're suffering out there. As soon as things start getting better, they're going to need these training dollars and we anticipate even more for need and demand. And as always, it's good to see you here, Chris. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-three companies, service, some of them their second time around, so I mean-
That's correct, yes.
What a great program, you do a great job over there, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair? Aye.
Proven intern consulting service agreement with Maximus Columbus to install a ledger suite in amount of twelve thousand dollars should be paid from the WIA account. Disinstallation and training are necessary for the budget department to perform fiscal responsibilities associated with commissioners taking over as fiscal agent for WIA.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Any comments?
Yeah, I think I should explain this to the board a little bit. Slowly but surely, we're moving a lot of our fiscal responsibilities back into the budget department that have been, for various reasons, in different organizations. This one was over at Job and Family Services. Mary did a yeoman's job helping us when it wasn't really her responsibility to, through the years. We just never really tightened up and cleaned up and brought stuff more fully in-house. We should have did this a year or two ago, but we weren't positioned correctly to do so. And I'm very comfortable now that our department can handle this type of responsibility. These funds are very unique, they're a little bit different than how we use general fund dollars, so we have to be very careful. I'm comfortable that Lisa and her staff and Vivian and her staff are doing a great job to make sure that we know what we're doing and to be able to meet our own responsibilities without outside help. Plus, we'll recover some costs from the WIA dollars to offset our general fund cost of providing these services. That'll come to you later in the year because we actually used to pay for these services. It's another one of those things, we might as well pay ourselves and do the job ourselves.
Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the engineer war contract to Gregory Trucking Inc. in the amount of ninety-one thousand, fifty dollars for limestone agri for Lorraine County Highway Department. Buy bids were received on March 27th and based upon local preference, war will be given, will be to Gregory Trucking Inc. in Leria. Engineer's estimate was a hundred thousand will be paid from the supplies and materials account, one hundred percent MBGT.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, this was an item that we held from last week. In my opinion, I think we need to keep our local preference the same as it has been in the past and not change it to accommodate for Erie. Erie came in last week and they put on a very good presentation as to, you know, why they should be considered. But if we want to keep our people in Lorraine County businesses working, I think we need to stick to the local preference the way it stands. And I did meet with John Gregory from Gregory Trucking this week and he showed how much money that their company pays in property taxes and how much their, you know, their employees, how many employees they have and how much they, you know, really contribute to our county. So, maybe my recommendation is to keep our local preference as is and not change it in any way at this point.
I agree with that, Commissioner. Actually, I was going to read some of the things that Mr. Gregory sent us. In three years alone, thirty-five Lorraine County residents paid over fifty thousand local income taxes, a payroll of almost three million bucks. They paid Lorraine County real estate and personal property taxes in a tune of twenty-three thousand and generated over ten point three million Lorraine County sales, producing two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars in local sales tax. They purchased over sixty thousand dollars in local advertising in Lorraine County. Spent over forty-three thousand dollars on meals and entertainment for employees and customers, all spent in Lorraine County. Local donations to local charities in excess of thirty thousand dollars in Lorraine County. Spent one point seven five million at local businesses for general operations in Lorraine County. On top, they hired approximately twenty other truck owner-operators to deliver supplies. So, I would agree with that, that's why I seconded the motion.
Did we ever get the figures from Erie on what, how many employees and how much they contributed in property taxes and things like that?
I didn't look at the property tax, but Erie did indicate here that they had, I think it was twelve employees in Lorraine County. But they didn't say in Lorraine County, they said they employed twelve people that lived in Lorraine County.
Right.
Okay. And in my discussions off and on with each commissioner, you know, throughout the week, it was indicated that, again, that forty percent of our residents do work outside of Lorraine County. It's not a number that I'm pleased with, but, you know, that's the reality of life. So, a lot of people have Lorraine County employees working for them. So, I think when I was discussing it, that the commissioners wanted to get the numbers from Gregory Trucking to make sure that we compared apples to apples with regard to our policy. And I think that you can see that there's a significant, there is significant business here and a going concern in Lorraine County.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair? Aye.
Mr. Fardes, can I, Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do have a couple of issues this morning, commissioners. A few things came late that we really need to deal with. The first one is because of some timing issues, I wasn't able to get this from the veterans and we need to buy some flags. I did go back, I did have them give us a flag to make sure it's made in America.
I was just going to ask you that.
You know, you catch me once, Commissioner, you catch me a second time. So, I even brought you a sample.
Okay.
So, we're good to go. I want to pass this down. I would ask that we approve this resolution for veteran services to get these flags on order. And it's for nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. It's an annual thing they do with the flags. But we weren't able to get it into board business in times essential to make sure they get here in time for their ceremonies.
We don't need to sign it?
Well, I just need a resolution authorizing that purchase and we can deal with it from there.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair? Aye.
I also have, if I want to time this correctly, I need a resolution and I'll ask the clerk to read that to you and then I'll explain it to you. It has to do with rapid response dollars and our partnership and collaboration with the Lorraine Community College and some good news that we received with regard to these dollars.
Accepting rapid response training funding from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and service fiscal administrative agent for Lorraine County Community College in order for them to provide training for the state of Ohio Rapid Response Program through the Workforce Investment Board.
What this is, is that the state has chosen Lorraine County Workforce Development and Lorraine County Community College to be the state training facilitator. Come on up, Viv. I don't know if Mary knows much about this, you're not in this end, you're here for something else, I know, Mary, but it's really exciting for us because our workforce development and our community college is going to be going out training all the other areas in rapid response. And we were chosen by the state to do so, so we're trying to move pretty quick on this.
Sure, this is part of that RIG grant, commissioners, that we had received and with Elaine Colvin from Community College, we had been working diligently trying to develop that rapid response. And at the same time, the state was developing their program too. So, what ended up happening through us traveling throughout the state of Ohio, meeting with all the other areas to show them what our prototype is that would work for all the WDAs, the state asked us to come on board and we were working very hard to get them to let us come to the table, not to take over the rapid response, but just to allow us to show them what we have developed because we're in the trenches and we deal with the rapid response. So, it turned out that they really need us on board to help generate this training, which will be done by Community College.
And this is happening very, very quickly. The state, we've been doing this by email with the state. We've been in communication with our partners at the college. And they're really, very satisfied with all the things that have been done and it's nice to see the confidence from them coming to us, not only to workforce development here, but also to the people at Lorraine Community College setting the standard for a lot of areas in the state.
Absolutely, and I just want to, you know, note too that Elaine Colvin, you know, has really done a very good job putting that together and for the state to see our collaboration that continues, which is really not around the whole state of Ohio where colleges and workforces really collaborate and it's been a great working relationship.
You know, this is all stems, this all begins with the growth partnership and the collaborations that we have.
Did you hear that poll? Say it for you.
So, you know, this is happy news. It's not a lot of dollars, but it does show that we are providing the leadership. So, I'd ask that you pass a resolution agreeing to the, you know, fiscal agent and allow us to work with the college and the college is going to go out and going to do this training around the state.
Thank you.
I'm not done with Viv, you need to stay, but I need to get this first.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Okay, before I give you this next one-
My goodness.
I need to find out what I did with the press releases.
I have a press release for workforce development.
Yes. Whichever one of you would like to go on this, because I need to jump off of this afterwards.
Well, go ahead.
So, if somebody wants to, oh, please. Or the clerk or anybody, it's-
Do you have it? You don't have it? Okay, it's actually good, good news. The Lorraine County Board of Commissioners is extremely pleased to announce that they have been recently awarded one million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in stimulus funding from the U.S. Department of Labor for the Workforce Development Agency. This funding has been provided for a summer youth employment program for ages sixteen to twenty-four years old. This is an excellent opportunity to hire approximately two hundred high school and college-age youth to work for the benefit of Lorraine County residents. In this difficult economic time, employment opportunities are limited for all residents, but this is especially true for our young adults often getting their first jobs. These employees will be placed on various businesses and agencies throughout Lorraine County. They will work four days each week for eight hours per day. Then every Friday, there will be a mandatory soft skills training. So, they can go to your office, I believe?
Yes, we will be taking applications tomorrow, Thursday, and also on Saturday. Tomorrow, we're taking applications from nine to six and Saturday from nine to five. And there are certain guidelines that they have to meet to be able to qualify to be in the summer youth program.
Do you have some of the guidelines, Vivian?
Well, some of those guidelines, it starts out with federal-based guidelines, federal income guidelines.
Low to moderate income?
Yes.
And they're posted on, a lot of them are posted on the internet?
Yes, we have a flyer that, you know, people can, anyone can access. Plus, we distributed flyers to twenty-one high schools throughout the county. We also e-
I'm sorry, keep going.
I'm sorry. We also emailed our, you know, partnering agencies that we work with. And this is for all the WDAs in the state of Ohio, you know, that did receive it. So, I think we're trying to be prepared for a large turnout tomorrow and Saturday. And it's first come, first served. We have to go through a process, but I think we're going to have a large response.
The, do you have the website address for that with us?
I'm glad I dropped my glasses.
Okay.
Yes, it's www.lorainecounty.us/workforcedevelopment.
And we'll have this for the media and they'll have this information there. This is another program we've been moving really, really fast on. We've got very little time to put this in place. The good thing is they finally have relented and given us some admin money to run this program. We thought we were going to have to run this with our current resources and it was getting really tough to figure this out. We're actually going to hire two hundred more people. Now, to let you know what that means to us, on our payroll system, now, we only do about a hundred and eighty people. We actually are going to hire two hundred people, be doing all that work out of here in conjunction with the WDA. We met yesterday to figure this all out and how we're going to get it done. And this program is not, they say summer, but it runs for five months.
Yeah, actually, it's originally supposed to start May first through September thirtieth. I mean, that's when you actually can gear up the program. We just got our funding, you know, our allocations letter this week. So, it's just been a very fast, fast-paced process and we're still, you know, developing and putting things together as we go along because we've had numerous meetings in Columbus because there are some things that we really have to iron out that actually will make sure that every area is still on the same page and we're all doing it the same. If all of our money has to be spent, seventy percent of my money has to be spent by September and then the remaining amount, ninety percent of the remaining has to be spent by December. So, what could potentially happen in September if we have spent all of our money, which the way we did the budget, we're at seventy-eight percent spent for September, there's a potential of us receiving additional dollars. Because if other areas are not spending their money, they will withdraw it and pull it back in. So, there is a potential for us to receive additional dollars.
They're going to redistribute it then to the communities who are using it, beautiful.
Right, we're going to, we're out ahead of this. I really think that we're pretty far ahead of most communities. We're moving pretty quick.
Yeah, I've been up at three o'clock on apples every night thinking about this, but-
You know, I bring up all the problems and Vivian and I bang our head against the wall a few times, but we-
Yeah, I'm not supposed to, I'm not trying to catch you on gray hair, Jim.
But I'm excited about this. This is a million-two of new dollars coming into our community and providing opportunity to a lot of our residents that don't have other opportunities right now. But this is not as easy as putting them on. I mean, we got work rules and work regulations and we got, you know, workers' comp and PERS and everything that goes along with it. And we're trying to sort through this stuff and we're trying to do it two hours ago for things that needed to be done, you know, immediately, so.
And the good thing, it's not costing the commissioners.
Correct.
It's not costing the general fund anything. And we're paying the salaries of all those youth for those businesses. And we've had a, right now, we have twenty-two businesses. I should say twenty-two individual businesses that are interested. That includes-
Right, government, private nonprofit.
So, we've had a large response. Yesterday, we had a request, someone said they could fill two hundred positions, but-
Well, here's the thing-
Architec called?
Here's the pitch, for those that are watching, we still need more businesses. We need more places to place-
Yes, absolutely.
And the reason I had you read it, not me, is because of these youths. We definitely would need quite a few more businesses. Most of them will take a few and we have to place over two hundred. So, if the businesses are interested, they need to contact us. We are going to go out with some information through the chamber, through the BIA, through Team Lorraine County. So, we'll be accessing a lot of employers. But, you know, these have to be meaningful jobs that will teach, you know, some developmental skills for these folks to be able to understand what it means to go to work on a consistent basis, be at work, to function properly in the workplace.
And that's why they're required to have a work readiness skill. That's why we chose to do Monday through Thursday and Friday is a mandatory work readiness soft skill, you know, session that they have to attend every Friday. Instead of trying to fit it in, we're allowing them to work the thirty-two hours per week. And it'll probably run about twelve to fourteen weeks.
Now, something else that's gone under the radar screen and we'll be bringing back some additional information on that later on, I'm also pleased to tell you that we received about one point two in stimulus dollars for adult dislocated workers.
Close to one point five.
So, that's an additional one point five on top of this that we haven't really brought up in the field.
For training or jobs?
Well-
Actually, you know, on the adult side, it's geared towards training, Commissioner. There's also some dollars for internships for adults, which is a little different for us this year. So, with Don Graves, we've been working together. I think they had a job fair yesterday and we are trying to generate some businesses that maybe the businesses that are looking for my youth, it may not work because of the skill level of that job that we can move some of those adults who fit that skill level and allow them to, you know, capture some internships. It's geared towards the same, you know, they would like us to target, you know, the low-income and those on public assistance and the dislocated worker. I think that when Mary and I do the next presentation after this, you'll see how things are really, really moving in Lorraine. And this is a first because training dollars, even though we have it, it's probably one of the hardest things to get people interested in. But actually, you know, we're having a different thought process and turnaround for it. So, the adult side, we have quite a bit of money and I think we're meeting today again to try to brainstorm on where we're going to take the adult side too. But the youth part is, needs to be geared up immediately.
We'll bring you back some more information, but what we're looking at is almost three million dollars of additional stimulus dollars that are going to churn in Lorraine County. And if you put a multiplier of five on those dollars, because they will all be spent here in Lorraine County, you're injecting, you know, potentially fifteen million dollars worth of churning into the community in the next several months. So, it's a nice economic stimulus for us here locally. And we'll bring you back more on the adult end later on. I just wanted to, I was getting too much happy news out there, Vivian. By the way, you look great at the podium. I didn't hear any stuttering or any nervousness this morning.
It's getting better.
So, you're getting used to it. With that, Commissioner, the reason I had to do the press release first, we anticipate such a turnout for these jobs in the next three days. I need to do this memo of understanding between the Workforce Development Agency and Lorraine County Sheriff's Office for off-duty assignment for deputies so that we have some crowd control and some orderly process over there. I saw what happened when the jobs came available at Minutemen for working at the college and so forth. It was really chaotic and we want to make sure that we think ahead and we do have funds to pay for this. All we have to do is enter into the MOU and I think that, you know, this will work out well and be a much more orderly process. Maybe it won't get that way, but I rather prefer to be, you know, safe than trying to deal with it later on.
So, these will be temporary jobs?
Yes.
Hopefully, and maybe turn into a permanent job for some of these folks?
Well, you know, and that's the whole thing geared up. And the whole idea behind it after it ends is the potential that we can take some of these participants because these have to be new participants, not our current participants. We can co-enroll our current participants. But the whole idea, I'm hoping that comes out of this is that at the end of this, that we can encourage some individuals, especially those youth who are nineteen through twenty-four, to seek additional training because we still have, we have training dollars too on the youth side. And maybe we can gear them into that employers might be interested in to hire them and that we can continue training for them, you know, to build that skill set for them. So, hopefully, some, you know, greater things will come out of it.
And what would be the salary range? Would it be minimum wage or above minimum wage?
It'll be seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
And that's dictated by the program, right? I mean, that's-
Well, we could somewhat set as long as we had minimum wage. But in order to make sure that we have a decent number of individuals, youth being put to work, we, you know, we tried to take the salary up higher, but the more we go up, that means a less number of kids will receive jobs. We could have cut the hours down. I mean, we could have did a lot of various things, but that's not giving individuals the opportunity to receive that skill set. So, it'll be seven fifty an hour. And just one more thing I wanted to point out, I'm sorry. But in September, when they determine that we've spent all our money and we reached that seventy percent, if everything goes well, they will allow us to continue a program for those eighteen to twenty-four to continue working. And that's what that extra pot of money would be if they're going to gear it towards us And that's what that extra pot of money would be if they're going to gear it towards us, is to put the youths who are out of school or who have dropped out of school, continue their work.
And that's why we're going to make it work, because we want to, we want to get the dollars where other people fail and bring them here, because we're successful. So, you know, it's exciting and you can see it has continuation on it. I, I don't know how many we can do on a continuation basis, but it'll, it'll be, it'll be good if we, we get those additional dollars. Again, we'll give the information to the, to the media and hopefully, they'll put it in there where the website is and have these people come out beginning tomorrow and through, through the weekend. Good job, Vivian. I mean, it's been a rush. We, we, we have a fun, yesterday, we met with Transit. We're also trying to figure out how to get these kids to work. Giving them jobs is one thing. Now, we have to figure out how to get them to work on a consistent basis, because a lot of them don't have transportation. So, we were, we met with Transit yesterday and we were talking about some collaborations we may be able to do there with public transportation. We have to get gas cards and, and things like that. Vivian and I had a bit of a discussion on supporting public transportation and trying to make the stimulus dollars, you know, do multiple jobs as they, as they trickle down. So, there's still a lot of pieces that we have to pull together, but it's, it's been exciting and it's been, it's been-
And one more thing and then I'll sit down. And I'll probably be coming back to the commissioners. The state of Ohio was trying to set up a collaboration with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to also employ some of the youth in their state parks. And Finley is our only park in this area, but we are working, we put some suggestions to the state. I felt that they needed to use some of their dollars that they have allocated for transportation, to transport those kids to those state parks and tie in with our metro parks in each local area. So, they are going to do that. We just haven't received that information to actually, you know, get into that agreement. But I think that's something that is coming pretty soon. I'll say probably in the next couple of weeks. But that will be a joint effort, so something will probably have to come to the commissioners to enter into that.
Yeah, one of, one of the things we talked about yesterday, and again, this may, we may get the board involved in this pretty quick. These FTA rules on charter are making it extremely difficult for us to use stimulus dollars and, and support with public transportation. I think it's time that they, they went back and revisited this. We're not trying to be competitive with the private sector. There's just no service out there like this. And we're precluded from certain services under the FTA regulations with regard to charter, so we have to be really careful. But I think it's time we, we weighed in with, with some of our legislators and had them take a look at this, especially with all the stimulus dollars out there that could trickle into public transportation. If we were allowed to go from point A to point B and C and D consistently, we'd be able to transport these kids with public transportation very easily and put money into the public transportation system in Lorain County very easily. That said, the regulations don't allow us to do it easily. And that's where we're struggling right now to figure out how to use these dollars to provide public transportation. So, we may want the board to weigh in with a position and it probably won't change anything, but it's, it's, the opportunity is ripe to try to get some of those things changed for the future, because they're very parochial and it's very old thinking. And, and we need to, we need to be in front of that issue too.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. David Ashenhurst, Oberlin. Anybody watching this on TV, it's noon on Saturday. If they have to bring a birth certificate and get it to the Workforce Development Agency by 5 o'clock today, they certainly won't be able to do it from Oberlin. Public transportation takes better than two hours to get there. If anybody's got it in their safety deposit box, they won't be able to get it out. This sounds like a wonderful thing. I look at the newspaper online every morning and then I look at it in hard copy later in the day. But I think even if our newspapers say something about this today-
Online, David.
What?
Online is breaking news. 200 available jobs.
I understand, I understand. But they aren't going to learn from that, that they need to bring a birth certificate and proof of income and the stuff that's asked for on the backside of the press release, they're not going to know that. In my community and the JVS down south of us, they're going to learn about this, if at all, that 200 people have just been hired. I don't think you're going to have any trouble with lines, Mr. Cortez, but it's great if you would. I just think to have something like this on a first-come, first-served basis-
Well, wait a minute, wait, wait, back up there. I, I think I understand what your confusion is. Slow down. The jobs, the jobs are not on a first-come, first-served basis. The applications are.
I understand, but they're on a first-come, first-served basis and they end at 5 o'clock on Saturday, according to-
Right now, that's the first wave. And if they don't have, if they have a missing document, they can bring the documenting later on. We, you know, so-
I just think if you're, if you're, you know, really trying to, if you're going to have this short a window, at least let them apply online or something. People can get to a computer by 5 o'clock Saturday, even if they just see this now and go looking for the information and start scrambling.
Let me, let me respond a little bit.
Okay.
We weren't able to, no, stay, David, stay, stay. I actually appreciate your concerns and we, we did talk through a lot of these concerns. First of all, the regulations and the requirements they put on us made us act and move this quickly. Second of all, I don't believe that this will be the last round, I don't anticipate this being the last round of application process. This is the beginning of the process to get going. The, the second thing, if they're missing a document, they can come in, fill out the paperwork. We're going to keep moving through the applications and they can provide us with a, a future date, okay, as long as they can provide it.
You can't accept these on Monday as well?
The, the, right now, we're doing three days, all right, and there'll, there'll be other opportunities.
Counting today?
No, you're doing Friday and Saturday, Jim. It says on the-
Excuse me. Well, we're going to actually open up this afternoon, right, Viv?
It starts on Friday.
Friday, two days?
Friday, Saturday.
Okay, but there'll be other opportunities. The, I think we're going to see a lot of turnout. And as far as getting there, this is, this is an issue I just spoke to with regard to transit and-
I understand, but you're only collecting that one place. Again, I paid pretty close attention to the newspaper. I know what we're doing in Oberlin with youth who, you know, trying to figure out how we can have summer job programs and things like that. You've been working on it a long time, but I'm glad to hear that the 21 high schools have received information already. Maybe they know more about it than-
I think we've been working on this for about a week, 10 days. We haven't had much time.
Well, I'm just really concerned that this is going to look like an inside thing. That if you, if you know something, you know ahead, you can really even be paying pretty close attention and not hear about this till after it's done.
Did you say that high schools were notified about this program?
Yes, yes.
So, JVS and-
Vivian will speak to that.
And all of our partner organizations, boys and girls.
Yes.
They've all been notified of this, who have the-
But David, I do understand your concerns. I think they're very legitimate.
I think what is clear to understand is there are federal guidelines. It's no different than jobs and family services. We cannot take applications online, because we cannot make eligibility-
Determinations.
Yes, I mean, we cannot do eligibility on the phone. We can't do it online. We have to do it in front. And the best place was to do it at the one stop, because that's where everybody knows we're at. If we tried to set up all over the county, it would be too massive. So, that's why we hit all the high schools to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You know, we hit the high schools to make everybody aware of that, but there's just federal guidelines that we have to follow in order to take the documentation to-
We're, we're going to see how the first wave goes and-
Right. I mean, this is, just trying it, you know. This is our first round, just trying it. I mean, we may find Friday and Saturday, we only had a response of 100 people, so then we look at doing it different.
Well, and let me make this perfectly clear. Just because somebody's made application doesn't mean they're going to get a job.
Absolutely.
I want, I want to make that known. Even if they're eligible, doesn't mandate that they get a job.
Absolutely.
There's going to be a further screening process. And there's going to be an alignment of the jobs that are available with some of the skill sets. Some of the employers need specific skill sets that, that we may not be able to fill or that some, some people have a greater ability for. So, I, I, I think we, I'll say it again. If they come in and they're eligible and they apply, they still may not be guaranteed a job. This isn't, this is not a, a handout, I'm eligible, I get it. We're going to screen these packages. We're going to try to align skill sets with the employer's needs and do placement with, with a lot of these young folk. And I believe that there'll be a second, and there may even be a third round of, of application taking. But we have to start somewhere. We got to start quickly, because we're supposed to be up and running by May 1st. And that, that's where the urgency has come in, right? And we didn't do this. But, but damn it, we got 1.3 million dollars and we're going to get into that mix and we're going to spend this money and we'll catch up with some of the, some of the other issues later on. But we're going to, instead of sitting around designing it for the next three months, we're going to do it. And that's pretty much what we decided.
Yes. Any questions?
Keep doing what you're doing, Vivian, it's fine.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Rummix, Oberlin. I wonder if the press release hasn't been already disseminated. It might be slightly modified, because there is that list on the backside of required documentation. And then a paragraph or two down, it has in italics, "All documentation must be presented in order to complete an application." But nowhere does it indicate that it could be at a later time, for example. Also, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Also, quite possibly, if this is a first-go-round, it may not be advisable to say there will be a second-go-round. But if that could be indicated in some fashion, that might be useful for people too.
A, a couple of things, when, when we looked at the wording there, was that, A, we didn't want people to procrastinate and, and wait for a potential second round. And I didn't say there would absolutely be one, but I believe, I say anticipate one. I, I know you disagree, David, but- But, and the second thing is, we didn't want them to not work hard to bring their documents, thinking that they can come later. We will be working with them, but I would prefer that they came fully loaded and ready to go. Because going back through the application process is difficult and time-consuming, but we will work with them. One of the things, I think they need a social security card, right, Vivian? And I, I, quite honestly, gee, I couldn't probably find my social security card right now, so-
Well, it's because it's so old.
Who said that?
I did. It's because I know from experience.
Yours is on parchment paper, right, Mr.?
But, but, so, David, your concerns are well, well, well taken and we'll see what we can do.
Yes, sir. Can you just state your name and then?
Lou Acosta, Lorain County Magazine. Just to reiterate on something that Jim said there, as far as transportation. I know in the past, when we've worked with, like, Lorain Metropolitan Housing, they've had, had funds for buses and transportation to get lower-income people throughout the whole county. People between 16 and 24, when we have to take them out, different places, activities, things like that. Their seniors and also their adults. And since this is basically for dislocated workers, low-income people, I think it might be a good idea to just contact Lorain Metropolitan Housing, just to see if they have some dollars for transportation, because they've done that within a 24-hour period in the past.
We'll, we'll do that. Thanks, Lou.
Mr. Cortez, would it infringe too much on the program that you have and Vivian have so wonderfully put together if we would have a third day on Monday?
Done. It's, we'll have a third day on Monday.
Vivian, oh, no.
No problem, right, Viv?
No problem.
9 to 5 also?
Same time.
Whatever, whatever the desires of the board, I'm just happy we have money, so we're going to make it work. And, you know, David, like I said, David, your concerns were well taken. I-
I say 9 to 5.
Same time.
One of them says 9 to 6.
Well, one's 9 to 5, one's 9 to 6, and 9 to 5 on Monday.
Vivian, how late do you work on Monday? 9 to 5 or 9 to 6?
Should be all be the same.
It doesn't matter to me.
They should all-
I can do 9 to 6.
That's fine, then 9 to 6 would be wonderful.
But they should all be the same.
But before I really commit, I need to really go back to the building and coordinate to see what's going on in the building that Monday, so I can make sure that we can actually let it run right and then I can get back with you.
Well, now, we, we're going to do it Monday. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
I want to suggest that the times be all the same.
So, you want all 9 to 5 or all 9 to 6?
All 9 to 5. Is that okay with you?
I'd probably prefer to go to 6.
All 9 to 6?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that that somewhat helps if individuals are getting off.
Friday, Saturday, Monday, and 6.
If you need some people over there, I'll get you some bodies. We'll, we'll, we'll make it work, all right?
Jim will come over and help.
Absolutely. For 1.3 million dollars, I'll, you know, I'll stand there and open the door for folks. Yes, I'll find my social security card. The way things are going, I may need one of those jobs.
There you go.
Well, was there a resolution to approve?
There really is. I, I need a resolution to approve the MOU. Did we do one for that?
No, not yet, that's-
Okay, I, I need it for that. The rest is, the rest is just all good news.
So, moved.
Second.
Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Commissioner, we'll be bringing back the full program to you when it's more fully matured for, for your approval on some of the things that we're doing before we go to hire, because you will be the hiring authority for these folks too. And at that point, we'll pass some resolutions about what we want to do, but this is just the initial launch. So, you'll be getting more involved, probably in the next two or three weeks. That, that is all I have this morning. I think that's more than enough. Thank you, Madam Court.
Do you want me to finish these last two things and then do her presentation?
Sure.
Because it's, Mr. Enos, this is kind of prosecutor.
I just need to wrap up a matter of threatened litigation. And just for Shirley's benefit, Teresa and I, and I think Shelley-
And Lynn Long.
And then are all going to a public records update seminar that we have to go to, so-
Where? Brook Park, Ohio.
Brook Park. Brook Park, Ohio.
Just wanted to let you know we're keeping up on that, Shirley.
Thank you.
Threatened is what he said.
Hopefully, wrapping up.
Commissioners' report.
Under Board Correspondence Number 17 and 21, we've got requests from Ron Nabokowski and Judy Nedwick for workman's comp shortages to their budgets. Are we going to send them letters to tell them that we're going to take that out of their fourth-year salary allocations? Do they know, you know, that there is no more money to give?
Well, they know there's no more money to give. I have made that crystal clear on behalf of the board. The, we, we are going to pull it from future allocation, so the bill gets paid. I have not communicated that with them as of yet, but I will do so this week. I guess I don't need to anymore, because it's out there now.
Well, they're going with the third quarter allocation, so they could prefer any additional job layoffs to meet their salary accounts for the end of the year.
Okay. I, I know we, we had talked about doing that and I was working on effectuating that, but I will make sure before the end of the week that they know exactly what we're doing, so they can take the appropriate steps. On behalf of campus, as I've been kind of delaying it a little bit.
Well, every, every department, every elected official has had this same problem, including us. They've all, most everyone has found a way to manage this by taking money from one line item to, to accommodate for this, other than the sheriff. And we had decided to pay his, only because we had worked so hard to bring a couple deputies back through the solid waste department, that we didn't want to then turn around and lay one off, because it would have been a full deputy. It was, what, 60-some thousand?
Actually, in order to get those kind of dollars, you probably would have had, this late in the year, probably two, maybe three, to get that kind of dollar savings. Would you, would you agree, Sheriff? So, I mean, that, we, we couldn't have gotten the savings that we needed without, with just one this late in the year.
Then the other thing is on Number 19, Lorain County Engineers asking for $15,000 from the solid waste department. From, yeah, from Lorain County Solid Waste Department. What's the status on that?
Probably not going to get any money.
Why?
Because we're going to give them bodies from this youth program.
Pardon me?
We're going to give them bodies from the youth program to do the, the litter control. We have 200 people we need to put to work.
I know, but I, as far as the engineers' office, they have the same people that return year after year that know how to do the job already. I don't think they're, they were hiring any new people.
Well, obviously, we can, we can give them the money from solid waste or we can give them bodies from this program. I need to find placement for 200 people. I was thinking that some of the placements could offset some of the expenditures and some of the things that we did here. Even our litter control program, I was thinking maybe we'll staff that with those folks. But if you want to do those programs, we could certainly do them this year. I'll bring it to board next week.
Okay.
We don't have board next week. That's okay.
Oh, yeah, week after next. We're off next week, fifth Thursday of the month.
And I won't be here, so I guess I should explain now that-
Oh, yeah.
I will be down at the State Personnel Board to review defending the board's layoffs that they took action on in December. So, I won't have the privilege of your company for-
Couple of weeks.
Almost three weeks.
I'll call you from DC. I'm going down there to beg for more money.
So, I will, I will make sure it gets acted upon. Mr. Twining and I will, will huddle up and make sure we take care of that.
That's in my report.
Well, first of all, my sympathy's out to the Pallouch family. Dan Pallouch, longtime employee of Lorain County Solid Waste Department, passed away this week from cancer, almost a year when I spoke to his wife yesterday from when he was diagnosed. So, we're going to miss Dan and condolences out to his family. Also, this week, Monday evening, I was at Avon Lake City Council as they were discussing a possible wind co-op amongst the larger businesses, PolyOne, Lubrisol, Ford, about bringing in a utility-grade wind turbine and putting it on the commercial property to helping offset their future costs when it comes to energy. It was nice. She asked me if, she could introduce me when I showed up. It was nice, she asked me if she could introduce me when I showed up. I said, "Sure, I'll say hello, thank you for doing it." And about two minutes prior, too, without an agenda, Jennifer says, "Betty said it's gonna be ten minutes late, you need to open, give me five minutes." So, I'd like to thank Jennifer for that, it was very nice speaking to council, and it was actually on live TV, they broadcast theirs live, I didn't know that. And the companies that showed up, I had a nice long talk with Jim Bass from Bass Ford, not only about energy consumption, but other issues he had, and Congresswoman Sutton, as always, did a wonderful job speaking, especially since she serves on the Energy Committee in Congress. Also, want to thank Catherine Karpis and John Nolan from JVS, I took a tour out there yesterday. They are really moving forward, they're looking at Ohio facilities, monies towards doing a redo in two or three years, so they did a real nice job taking me around there, what a wonderful place. And this Sunday, at the Pipeyard in Lorraine, they are having their second annual Rube Foster Night at Pipeyard Stadium. The ceremony started at five-thirty. This year, they're gonna honor the nineteen-seventies Lorraine Black AC softball team, which dominated state and national tournaments. That's gonna be prior to the kickoff of the Emerald King Southview baseball game. I'm sorry.
You're gonna honor who?
The Lorraine Black AC softball team.
Oh, you're starting to sound like him. Don't talk English.
No, no.
I thought you said EC, that's why I asked. You can't talk English either. Thank you for the clarification.
I'm done with the report, now go ahead, Commissioner.
Good thing, Charlie, I take you back to English. Thank you. Are you done talking?
Yes, I am. My fellow commissioners.
I know you were, and I'm listening. I always listen when you talk.
How long did you report?
Just a follow-up on the West Shore commuter rail project. This past week, the task force met, and we received some excellent news from Greater Cleveland Regional Transit Authority. The Commissioners has sent a letter to them, asking them to contribute. This was at the suggestion of Richard Ente, our interim director at Lorraine County Transit, and they sent us a letter saying that if this project is going forward and the federal grant is being accessed, RTA will pledge a contribution of five thousand dollars towards the local share of sixty-eight thousand eight hundred to match the federal dollars. What is even more interesting to me is that the RTA is also prepared to provide the significant staff time that will be necessary associated with this project. So, thank you, Richard, for your input, it was great news. And in addition to that, after the announcement was made by Mr. Ente, Rick Novak, the director of the Lorraine Port Authority, announced that his board had voted to also contribute five thousand dollars to this project. So we're moving along, and very appreciative of their support.
And Lorraine County has put money into the pot by hiring Rich to work on the grant coordinate, so you now have three or four entities with money towards the match, because that money can be used as part of the match later on, the sixty-eight thousand, so you got some good momentum, Commissioner.
We sure do. Train's coming.
That's it? Commissioners will not meet next Thursday, April thirtieth, and the Investment Advisory has been rescheduled again to May twenty-eighth. Workers Memorial Day proclamations were issued for April twenty-eighth, and there will be an event in Lorraine and Lorraine, and Board sent a proclamation in Rich Portnik on twenty-five years of service to job and families. Board of Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Ms. Caskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye. Go to Vivian.
Vivian? Presentation?
The Workers Memorial, the one in Lorraine is at twelve, and the one in Lorraine is at five, correct?
I believe so, I just didn't see the paperwork.
Yes.
We're gonna show this PowerPoint presentation, which is information regarding a new initiative that was in the collaborative effort with Lorraine Community College, and they involved the Employment Network and JVS. And it was a unique program called Make Your Layoff Payoff. This was a program that when they were brainstorming, not everyone was sure if it would be something that would really kick off and actually...
Vivian, come to the mic.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
There you go.
I thought it was one of those surround sounds. Actually, this is a, was a training initiative that was put together by the efforts of Lorraine County Community College, and then they involved the Employment Network and JVS. And some brainstorming took place to try to determine, how can we actually make something different for our dislocated workers? So they came up with this program called Make Your Layoff Payoff. And there were some efforts with everybody working together to generate and put together a pot of money that would allow some training to be given to dislocated workers. So I'll have Mary go through the process, and you'll see at the very end that there was a lot of funding that was leveraged, and how much money was spent, and how many workers actually benefited from this, Make Your Layoff Payoff.
All right, well, thank you, Vivian. I am going to go through the process that we use to take dislocated workers who were out there. Let me back up to say, why did we do this? Early January, in conversation, we were finding out, as everyone was on the news, yet Lorraine County was experiencing triple numbers compared to last year, when looking at unemployment claims. So if last year a hundred people a week were filing for unemployment, this January it was three hundred. And again, what were we going to do to provide services and opportunities for these folks? While that conversation was going on, another conversation was going on, and the Lorraine County Community College Foundation secured a private donation for fifty thousand dollars worth of scholarship money to be used for dislocated workers who maybe weren't eligible for financial aid. Those two conversations collided, and we said, instead of using our scholarship in isolation, let's go to our growth partnership partners and see what we can do to do something very comprehensive for the large number of dislocated workers in our county who are struggling to figure out what their next step was. So this will go through the process. And a busy slide, but just letting you know, this wasn't a, people come, they're interested in training, and we put them in. There was a process, and we wanted folks to go through some career awareness. That was the key to this program. It wasn't simply someone who was laid off saying, "Hey, here's proof that I'm laid off, I want to go here and get trained." There was a collaborative effort to get folks thinking about, what is my career? What kind of training do I have? What skills do I have? And where am I going to go with that? So how did we even get this started? We partnered with the Employment Network, because they have access to the lists of folks filing for unemployment claims. The college certainly doesn't have that kind of information. So they had access to the exact group of people that we wanted to get information in front of. So through the partnership, our marketing department created some postcards, but then we were able to use the list from the network and get the information directly into the hands of folks who were laid off. We also put ads in the local newspaper, and all of the partners involved were letting their staff and their constituents know that this effort was going on. We called, basically, we started with three orientation sessions, actually, four. We had no idea if ten people would show up, if nobody would show up. We were actually totally stunned that every session we held was standing room only. We had to move out of the tables, just to leave chairs. We had seventy and eighty people per session respond, who were interested in finding out how to go to training while they were laid off, so that when the economy rebounded, they were upskilled compared to their competition, or perhaps when they got called back to their current employer who had laid them off, they came back with new skills that would enable their employer to be more profitable. So we brought them in for approximately a one-hour presentation. This was coordinated by different staff members, it was a true partnership effort, the college, the JVS, the Employment Network, everyone helping make these presentations. Because again, like the youth program, we had about four days to get this moving, because classes were starting. So, a wonderful effort in that. And we talked about identifying their career goals, the training options and opportunities that were out there, the multiple sources of funding they might be able to access, and what to do after training. We wanted everyone, instead of just being known through the college or to the JVS, every one of these participants counts as being served by our one-stop, because we did this in partnership. We talked to them about the training options, and we actually arranged for some customized training a few weeks later for some very specific groups of dislocated workers, from the steel mill and from GM. We knew that Republic Steel was, you know, concerned that if their folks got into a training program, maybe six months, they were gonna be called back before then, and so they wouldn't finish the program. So the LCC and JVS were able to quickly assemble some short-term intensive programs that really upskilled that group of dislocated workers in anticipation of getting called Again, they had to do some career awareness activities. It wasn't simply, here I'm laid off, and I want to go and take this guitar class I've always wanted to take. These needed to be, and we combined our strategy with that of the Ohio Skills Bank and of the governor, that we need to be steering folks and informing them about the high-growth opportunities that are out there. So folks had to meet with a career counselor or a career professional at some point to say, "This is my goal, I think I could be employable again if I just had certification in welding, perhaps," instead of just knowing the skill. So those conversations had to go on. We talked to them about, do you want something short-term, just to refresh or upgrade, or maybe advance to the next level within your career? And a lot of folks, that's what they chose, but there were also folks who were looking at something more long-term. They are going to bite the bullet and go for that longer-term training program, because their industry is in such decline, they're going to make a complete shift. And we left options open for either scenario. Meanwhile, these training partners, let me tell you, at the college, we had already started our semester, so we had to find opportunities to get people into classes that perhaps were starting at a later date, we had to put together some training options that weren't there a week previous. We also needed, again, to look at, do we have the facilities? Sure, I could start three more welding training programs, except for one thing, our lab was already scheduled morning, noon, and night. So again, we worked with the JVS and the college to get what we needed out there. Again, focusing on high demand, and focusing on things that are part of a career pathway. Get a little piece of training now, that you can come back later and add to and add to, because it is a lifelong learning scenario these days. Obviously, money was at the forefront of everyone's concern. We, anyone that was going to a program that could be funded by federal money was required to do a federal financial aid application. This wasn't, oh, well, I've got this scholarship here, don't bother with that paperwork. They all had to look and see if they were federally financial aid-eligible, which is a good thing for them, if they were determined to be eligible, because that's going to last beyond one semester. We also looked at the individual training accounts that are available through the Employment Network and our one-stop. We also took advantage of something called Career Advancement Accounts, which was money available for dislocated workers from the state that did not in any way impact our local dollars. So basically, it was money at the state that could be used for dislocated workers, and if we didn't take it, someone else would. So we wanted to be in that line. It was specifically for people that were laid off from automotive or mass layoffs. And then we also had the LCCC scholarship. So we had a lot of resources that none of us could have had individually. I think we can skip through this stuff. But just with the process, staff from all of the partners was doing eligibility, at least the pre-work, understanding what you needed to take to the network, what you're going to need to enroll at the college and so forth. We also made some decisions based on, hey, this person really should be funded out of the WEA dollars, because they're going to have a real positive impact that's going to help us when we justify what we've done with the feds. Again, there were some processes around registration that got very detailed. The good news is, we learned as we went, and we made it as seamless as possible for the participants. The vast majority of those served did enroll at either LCC or Lorraine County JVS. We did have a handful of folks who, because of what they were interested in taking, they traveled to, I think we had a couple people go to Polaris Career Center, one to Remington for very specific training programs that weren't available here. But the majority of the dollars did stay here in the county. All of these folks will be reconnecting with career folks for their job search activities at the end of training. So it's not just, here's your funding, good luck, God bless. There is a reconnection at the end to make sure that folks are indeed applying this training to their job search. How do we make this continue beyond our initial effort? That's a conversation we need to have. We know that the WEA stimulus funds may be available after May, that's still a big window. We still have dislocated workers asking, how can I get into something like this? The WEA allocation will be available, we predict that that'll be available in July, but again, July's a long way off, if you have a limited number of weeks on unemployment. The scholarship funds are anticipated to be renewed and available for summer and fall term. That's not a completed deal at this point. Again, our scholarship was funded by a generous donor. We anticipate that it'll return, but it's not firm at this point. So we need to know where our additional sources of funding could potentially come How to sustain it programmatically? The college and the JVS continue conversations about courses that should be delivered, looking at the labor market research, looking where the job openings are, where employers are saying they need skilled workers, and figuring out where training programs could be created to take folks to the next level in terms of their employability. That's real difficult to see, but I'm gonna, I'll go through this individually. What was the outcome of this program? One hundred and fifty-five people have been placed into training programs in a matter of, what, two months? Out of that, sixty-two of those folks received those CAA funds. The funds that I told you were from the state that didn't interfere, didn't take anything away from our local allocation, to the tune of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So the story I'm telling you is that we started with a fifty thousand dollar scholarship, we brought all of our partners in, and in the end, we've leveraged it, and we've had four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars worth of training arranged for a hundred and fifty-five people. About half of that money came from sources that didn't cost us a penny. So even the Pell Awards, that's the thing that people need to know about. Why didn't they all just get federal financial aid? Because we look at last year's income. So a lot of folks who get laid off can't just walk into the college and get financial aid, because we look at last year, and last year they were working. So some did get Pell-eligible, but many did not. Forty-eight individuals received our scholarship monies, and forty-two individuals were funded with the individual training accounts from Vivian's organization. What you need to know is that those CAA funds are no longer available. Those have been, when the state, when they were gone, they're gone, and to our knowledge, those are not renewed. The individual training accounts in this partnership effort, we've basically drained the dislocated worker training money that was available through the Employment Network and the Workforce Development Agency. Although we expect that to be refreshed come July, July's a long way off if you're unemployed and trying to go to school.
And I did want to say something, that for the CAA funds, the workforce, the one-stop was the only one that actually could apply for those funds. So just coming out of our building, under the workforce side, there's over three hundred thousand dollars of funding that was actually accessed from the ITAs, from our normal regular formula funds, plus with the additional dollars that we applied for and sent to the state of Ohio.
Which was the CAA plus the ITAs?
Yes, it's over three hundred thousand dollars.
Question for you, how have we been doing on placement for the ones with the short courses? Have we had much success? Any recalls?
We know that folks from REP are being slowly called back in terms, most folks, even though we're calling it short-term training, it's just now ending, the end of the semester is May. There are folks who took something very short and are just now coming back out of that, and we're just engaging them at this point.
Well, I saw the time with JVS, and I said I was out there yesterday looking at any welding and robotics and what they offer out there, so the partnerships are very nice.
Oh, just a footnote to that, I don't know if they mentioned, LCC is remodeling their welding lab this summer, so they have graciously allowed us to continue teaching our courses in their welding lab in Oberlin, so that there'll be no break.
John Nolan, explain yesterday, the partnerships you guys have been able to establish out there, which is precedent-setting.
So hopefully, everyone will find these numbers as impressive as we have, that in a matter of weeks, we turned fifty thousand dollars worth of a donation to four hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Let me take it from here now. Why are we here? Why are they here?
Because of the partnership.
We need money.
We need money, too, okay.
All right, we need money to keep the program running. The partners approached us, and we had dialogue, and we saw that the outcomes were being produced, and it was overwhelmingly successful. And at first, I was a bit negative on this program, I have to admit. One more time like that, Mary. Yeah, one more time like that, Mary. It took a little convincing to get us into the deep end of the pool with this, but it really turned out to be a great program. Commissioners, we do have the ability to move some money around and put some additional ITA money into this program. We're, we have some Project 10 money that I don't anticipate completely exhausting before July, when we get a reallocation. I would like to recommend that we take $100,000 and move it into the ITA from Project 10 into our Make Your Layoff Payoff project, so that we can get about another 35 folks into this program until we get some of these funding streams reestablished after the new fiscal year with regard to state and federal funding. And I think the program has demonstrated its success. We'll be able to renew our Project 10 dollars, and it will still have over $125,000 in Project 10 dollars. I think it is sufficient to meet the needs of the companies that we see that are cued. I want to stretch those dollars and I want to make George sing, all right? So, I'm asking you to support this by letting Vivian move some of those dollars to the ITA to continue this partnership until we, again, as I stated, until we get additional resources and we can reallocate money at the new fiscal year.
The fiscal year starts in July, July 1?
July 1.
It's a lot of money.
There's a lot of need.
It's not general fund dollars.
I know that, but I don't want to see, I mean, Don Graves comes in every week with all these people that want to utilize our Project 10 dollars, and I don't want to not be able to fund a company wanting to train their workforce.
The good thing about the Project 10 dollars, we only have two more months for Project 10 this year. So, we'll still have over $125,000 of Project 10 money for the next two months. I believe it'd be more than adequate, and then it'll be refreshed. If a company comes in and we're out of money, all we gotta do is stretch them a little bit till July 1st, and we'll be able to fund them. So, I'm very, very comfortable and secure in stating to you that no company will be denied Project 10 dollars. It may be a little slow towards the end if we get an overwhelming response, but they will be funded.
But I think we'll be fine. And then, automatically, on July 1, you know, the money's regenerated, the funding's available again.
So, we're trying to churn our dollars and put them where the urgent need is, so we get them spent right now. And right now, this is where the urgent need is. And this program is producing successes, and I will point out that I see a little logo on the bottom of that slide. Looks like the Growth Partnership logo, I don't know. Another one of those things I must do on that magical fifth floor up there. But the funds will be available to meet the needs of all the programs, and we'll be able to engage 35 more people. And I will also point out that this started out with a $50,000 in scholarship money, and the college was able to come up with an additional $36,000 and to add to that $50,000 initial allocation for scholarships. So, they're pretty well exhausted. This old mother hubby went to the cupboard, there's nay a blow in there anymore, all right?
We didn't turn anyone away.
Right. So...
We all respect.
But Commissioner Koczyk, I understand you're concerned with Project 10, and we will make sure that every request from every employer gets met.
Okay.
I agree to move the $100,000 at this point. I mean, because I don't know if we're gonna spend $225,000 on Project 10, even though it's one of my pet projects, man. Screamed about that for years from the private side that we're getting it forward, so if you think we have enough, if not, the companies that come late, mid-June or whatever, can wait till July for their work with training.
Right. Normally, that training will, in fact, we could prob, we could approve it and pay for it in July. I mean, it's, it's just, once we do it here, it usually takes a few weeks to get it all, the contracts in place or anything. So, I'm very, very comfortable with this. I wouldn't make the request if I wasn't.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
One second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Nice presentation.
Glad it was in 45 minutes.
I have a, I have one...
How long can we go?
Not 45.
I have a question just for you and Mary, more for Mary. We've been doing this a long time. Have you, have you ever seen the ability to do programming the way it is in Lorraine County right now with the Growth Partnership and all the time you spend here?
We couldn't have done this two years ago. There is no way we would have had the partners at the table with the willingness and the just, you know what? If you can't do that, we can. Let's just move forward. I mean, we, we went from one conversation to a week later, we were having these massive information sessions, and just the staff was rallying, the resources were there. There were really no barriers to launching because we have this conversation openly.
It's the partners engaged in many, many activities on a consistent basis that allow it to move quickly and allow the communication to be had and the agreements to be had very rapidly. So, I just wanted to, I have to ask those questions because sometimes, things are invisible.
Thank you, John Cole. You'll never get off of it now.
I guess not. I told you, let it go already.
I was just pointing out that it's a value.
You gotta point that out, week after week after week.
Follow comment?
Thank you again, ladies, for a fine job.
Nice program.
Anybody wishing to address the board from the public today? Yes, come on up.
Once again, commissioners, thank you for having me here. Lou Acosta, Lorraine County Magazine. Just wanted to address the board on a few things. For the last few years, as I've been doing the Lorraine County Magazine, the Lorraine County Business, and Barde News, which we started not too long ago, and also the North Coast Latino, everything has been geared towards bringing business to Lorraine County and helping enhance the quality of life, you know, and everything we do out here to readership. Some of the projects, like we've been promoting, like for instance, this weekend, the Hispanic Conference coming up, which we have people coming from all over, Secretary of State McClintock coming to Lorraine County. There's a lot of businesses coming in, a lot of sponsorship, and a lot of people from all over, all over the state, pretty much, because a lot of students are coming in on scholarship. LULAC, National Organization, is also bringing in some people. And of course, promoting the Lorraine International Festival coming up with the Puerto Rican Spotlight Committee on that, which I sit on their board also. And May 23rd, this year, we are doing something at Lorraine, at Black River Landing, which is called the Home Family and Leisure Trade Show, okay? Basically, the last few years, I've been going up to all the shows up in Cleveland, doing some pictures, bringing them down from all the trade shows that go on, whether it's the auto show, whether it's the home and garden show. We have a lot of people in Lorraine that participate out there, and they win awards all the time, and a lot of times, they talk about, you know, "We don't have anything here." And I know years ago, down at JVS, they used to have like a little home and garden show and stuff like that. So, a couple of years ago, they started talking about maybe doing something here, and nobody does it here. Okay, so, last year, at one of the shows, I talked to a couple of guys, like JD Turza and a couple of other guys, "What about if we can do something in Lorraine County?", you know? "Oh, that'd be a great idea, I'll get involved, no problem." Well, that was, you know, last summer and everything. As we started getting everything together, by November, everybody's broke and the economy took a turn, and everything just got messed up. Anyway, I did have a couple of businesses that came up, are still want to go with this. They says, "Well, let's try a one-day show and have a couple of different people from the different shows, businesses. One from maybe the home remodeling, one from the garden show, one from the auto show, and so on and so on." So, we did get Black River Landing for May 23rd, which is Memorial Day weekend, you know, this year. And also, we are planning for November 7th, that weekend also. One of the reasons I'm bringing that up, because I want to bring it up to the commissioners, you know, because I like to have the commissioners' blessings, their recognition, their acknowledgement of things that we're doing to try to bring, you know, business to Lorraine County, and I'm pretty sure that if it goes good with one day this year, next year, we might be able to pull off Memorial Day weekend for three or four days, okay? And that's what I've been getting from a lot of the businesses outside of Lorraine County. Or we would get involved if it was like three or four days, because they're paying $5,000, $6,000 at the IX Center, you know, to go a whole week, two weeks over there. And we just want to bring them down here for a little bit, you know, so they can bring their people and bring some money and spend it here in Lorraine County. And basically...
Didn't, didn't we just have a, didn't we just do a career fair yesterday out at the college? How come we weren't collaborating on that?
There's a lot of things that go on that we don't collaborate on a lot of things, okay? That's why I'm bringing it to commissioners first, okay? Because I like to, you know, work with not just the commissioners, Growth Association, but, you know, everybody that's partnering, Team Lorraine County, you know, I mean, I've even had things with the inclusion, you know, Fund for Economic Future, all those guys, Team Neo, I've been out in Cleveland, they brought them here, which we helped promote and bring some of the business together in Illyria a couple of weeks ago. So, these are things we're trying to do to just help. I mean, because they're asking me, "Why don't I do it in Cleveland? Why don't I do it in Wesley? Why don't I do it somewhere else?" Why? I live in Lorraine County. I, you know, I push Lorraine County, why not? You know? Because Lorraine County's left out of the loop a lot of times. So, one of the things, I'm just trying to bring it back. Now, if I can get the help of some people, sometimes, maybe we can, you know, get together and collaborate on a lot of things, okay? Just give you a little, little, little something that happened yesterday. Ted, I was over, I mean, Monday, I was over at Lorraine, at the city council. Okay, of course, this is going to be in Lorraine, Black River Landing this week. They had me on the agenda, or supposed to be on the agenda, they stamped it when I went over there, and yet, I sat throughout the whole city council meeting, and at the end, nothing happened. So, I asked the secretary, "What happened?" "Oh, I thought you just wanted to give it out to all the councilmen." I says, "No, I do that every time we come in. I put it in their boxes, they already know. So, what's going on?" Well, now, I'm two weeks ahead. So, afterwards, all the councilmen came up, "Hey, what happened?" I thought, "I put it up there, nobody said nothing." So, four of the councilmen told me, "Well, we'll try to get it next week, but, you know, it's gonna go two weeks later." I know things happen, you know? I mean, I know things get misplaced and, you know, but if you're not vocal about it and you're not, you don't say anything about it, nothing's gonna happen, okay? So, I mean, I would appreciate if I can get the help that, you know, we need to do as much as we can. We even talked about maybe doing a whole board thing and doing a nonprofit and make it, but a home family and leisure show or a home family show where we can get people coming in, 25% of the outside people first to get it going, and then, it'll be 100% businesses from Lorraine County, bringing, bringing business and residents from outside, from anywhere, from Port Clinton to Lake County, bringing them here, so this way, it'll be an annual event, whether it's gonna be in the summer on a Memorial Day weekend, or in the winter, pre-Christmas type show for the vendors out here and the businesses out here, okay? So, just bringing that to you, so people can think about it, especially the commissioners. I'm not asking for no money, I'm asking for your help, your promotion, your email blast to everybody in the county, you know, anybody to help out, you know, to see if they can, you know, if they really want to bring some business here, if they really want to participate, if they really want to be a vendor, make some money, then, you know, go to the sources that are trying to do something, okay? And one last thing, as of last night, for two weeks, we've, I've been talking to the National Chamber, National Chamber, National Chamber of Commerce, I'm sorry, not the U.S. Chamber, but the National Chamber of Commerce. And as of yesterday, with the CEO and everybody that was involved in their executive committee, they have appointed me as the National, as the Greater Cleveland, because I made sure that they knew that, you know, I live in Lorraine County, the Greater Cleveland Chapter President, okay? And it's gonna take me a couple of weeks to get things going, but one of the things that I'm going to be doing is bringing as many businesses I can from the National Chamber that's gonna be all over Ohio here to Lorraine County. And I just need your support to help me do what I need to do, okay? And I thank you for your time.
You're quite welcome. Sounds exciting. We'll be there. Anything else? The move that we go into executive session is outlined by our county administrator.
Second.
Ms. Koczyk.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children are educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So, basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't, hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So, that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking, crossing the streets safely, and we're quite happy to announce
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets, we have actual working stoplights, we have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work, we have operational railroad crossings, we also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So, we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then, we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, "Does anybody want to volunteer?" Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So, basically, we have the whole class interacting. So, if they say, "Left, right, left, behind you, in front of you," once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So, we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, "You know what, Ms. Spansky? We were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, 'Look left, look right, look left.'" So, that was very rewarding. And so, I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then, our railroad crossing signals actually work. So, they're just like, "Oh, ooh." And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, "Well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run." And of course, they're, they're very enthusiastic, and, "No, we shouldn't do this." So, we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks, and just because one goes by and the signal stops, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. other direction. So, we tell them, it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks and they wait till those signals stop and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways and they should never run across the railroad tracks, they should walk and keep, continue to look both ways because it's not safe and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone, it could be very dangerous because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming because they are so small and, and as you know, some of those tracks are very large and you're talking in kindergarten through fourth grade, some of those children are very small children. The, the main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe, you have to make that ultimate decision. So, make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour, it's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains, we tell them, that train could take, you know, forever, it's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and first grade and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi kids, a lot of times, you have to walk to get to places and when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh no, those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat. Who's right Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without looking.
The second video, we show second, third, and fourth grade and it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey Asimo.
What's up Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So, what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this, they relate to Asimo as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So, he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So, they both cover the basic skills, one is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing, not only from the children, we have received numerous cards, we have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that, where we have, that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we've visited this year.
I think it was really nice because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said, when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's like cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight.
If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to... If they don't know how to cross with the outside blocks, I'll tell them how to do that too, because that's what we learned.
I think that it was good because I didn't let you have to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder and then ahead of you.
I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.
It's a good idea because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a, with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection, what happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to safety town and they learn, left, look left, look right, look left again and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did safety town and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, Matthew, remember Asimo? And he stops and he thinks and he does all the steps that he was taught in the, in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe, we don't have to follow those rules anymore, we can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road and I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful, we still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So, I think it was a good review, I think it was done in a fun, learning way and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.